I'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have two speakers in favor, five speakers in opposition.
If you will call the speakers.
Our first speaker in favor is William Davis.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is William Davis. I'm an attorney in Hope Mills. I represent the petition in this case. I reside at 3870 Wookersham Way, Fayetteville, North Carolina. My office is at 5431 Trade Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina. My client is the one who is in the process of purchasing these two lots to put not a truck stop, but to put a convenience store with a restaurant and a pumping facility mainly for diesel trucks. His intention is, and this is something he's had in the works and a desire to do for a long period of time, is the intention is to spend about $1.2 million to build this facility. So it would be an ultra-modern facility. Like I said, it would be a convenience store, fueling station, and a restaurant. Would not be an eyesore, would not be a truck stop. There was some opposition last time which people spoke about a truck stop. This is not a truck stop. It's not planned as a truck stop. There will be no facilities that would make it a truck stop. It is simply a convenience store with a restaurant and a pumping facility. It will be open 24/7, employ up to 10 people, be well lighted so there wouldn't be any possibility of crime and all going there. This is something we believe would increase the tax base of the county as well as benefit him as well. The big thing, the big reason why he wanted to do this, he wanted to build a facility where these big trucks could come in and fuel without the difficulty they have now. There is nothing between St. Paul's and Dunn that meets the needs of these truckers at the present time. What happens when they go to some of these facilities like in Hope Mills and all, they have to pull in and then have to back out, which means that somebody has to get out there and wave the traffic, stop the traffic and all that for them to get out. This facility, as you can see, they would simply pull in, turn to the right, do their business, turn back to the right, and come right back out. So there will be no danger to the public, and have easy access to it. He also intends, and I'm sure Department of Motor Vehicles will require him to do it, or DOT would require him to do it, and that's to widen the road. He intends to widen the road in front of his facility so that it will be a turn lane for northbound traffic and a turn round for southbound traffic. So they would have easy access and get in and out of the facility. He estimates that if this facility is up and running, that he will be able to sell 100,000 gallons of fuel per month because of the fact that this would be the only really modern facility in that area. And that would certainly benefit the county as well with the sales tax, would benefit the county with the increase in the property tax. Like I said, the planning board has estimated there are some 10,000 cars that travel that way. So this is not some rural road. This is a highway. And that he estimated-
Finish your last statement. Go ahead.
Okay.
Just the last statement.
What he's basically doing, he's willing to meet all the conditions. There are residential areas that are growing to the southeast area, and they certainly need a modern convenience store.
Thank you so very much. Your time's up. Thank you.
Do you have one thing, if I might just?
I hold everybody to the same theme, Mr. Davis. That's the three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you so very much.
I could shed some more light on it for a minute, but that's fine.
If you can-
Her next speaker is David Pate.
How you doing? I'm David Pate. I'm the one trying to develop this story out here.
Can you add address and everything?
3670 Hart Pine Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28306.
Thank you, sir.
The C3 you have up here, that is Wilson Trucking. And then across the road is Costco, C1. The C1 you have down at the bottom, C1P, that is owned, I believe, by the cousin of the pit stop, which does not want to sell it. I've went up and down this road trying to find property, and the pit stop owns 81 acres. There's nothing else available in this area to do nothing. They have cornered the market on 301. I've done my research. There's actually 11,888 cars daily that comes down that road. I've talked to DOT, Ritchie, and Mr. Wise. They are telling me they will not be doing in the next five years, there are no upgrades to that road till 295 is put in on the other side. I have to put in a turning lane if this is approved. They told me not to come down. It's a $50 permit, not to come get it until, to see what happens here. Other than that, as far as CP go, any commercial property? We have talked to the county about switching it to Alkulture One and dropping the restaurant and just putting a grill in. So that's what we were supposed to do last time, and for some reason it didn't work out the way it was supposed to work out. Other than that, that's all I got to say. There's no other property on 301 from Chickenfoot Road to 71. They own it all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is, in opposed to the case, is Roy Morrison.
Roy Morrison? Oh, okay. Take your time, we got you. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Roy Morrison. I live at 6142 US Highway 301 South, which is about 500 feet from this location. I'm here representing the Roslin community, who is in opposition of this rezoning. And if you would look, I would like for all the people in opposition to just raise your hand that I'm opposed to this. The members of this community have spoken with the planning board last month, and it was turned down. So we appreciate that. I'm here because the majority of the people in this community are retirees. The community has a lot of senior citizens, and it's a very quiet community. And we are opposing this for the following reasons. The homeowners in this community selected this area because it is a rural, quiet, low-crime location, and has been for the last, at least the last 40 years that I've lived here. And if you, well, yeah, okay, I see. 301 is a-
It's a service station, though. And I'm an elder-
And your name?
Joseph W. Williams.
Thank you. Okay.
And I'm an elder at Mars Hill Presbyterian Church. And we are in opposition of putting a restaurant and a truck stop that close to our church. It is 100 feet from property line to their property line from the church. It will cause too much noise, pollution, and on top of that, all the big trucks that comes, they will be more because we're building the loop around Fayetteville. A lot of people's buying dump trucks to haul dirt. And we have a whole lot of dump trucks, a whole lot of noise, a whole lot of pollution, and the big tanks in the ground. The water table is 20 to 25 feet in that area. And if one of those tanks start leaking, we won't have drinking water. So the congregation and myself, and the community, is in opposition of this restaurant slash truck stop. They say it's not a truck stop, but they say diesel fuel and trucks will stop. So it's a truck stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker in opposition is Ms. Deanna Braggs.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? I'm Deanna Hodges Braggs, and I live at 5958 US Highway 301 South. Okay? I'm gonna read this. Good evening. Let me start by saying thank you for allowing us, the residents of Highway 301 South, to voice our concerns. Again, my name is Deanna Hodges Braggs, and I currently reside on land that was passed down from my grandfather to my father. In fact, my grandfather Jim Hodges and his brother Sam once owned approximately 375 acres of the land that extends just from the Parkton Red Springs exit to the Parkton borderline. Over the years, my grandfather has sold plots of land to our neighbors who have built their homes along the highway in question. We live in a quiet community where all of our neighbors have known each other for decades. Our community consists of retired senior citizens, their children, and now their children's children. It's a safe community where we have all watched out for each other over the years. Our community also consists of two churches, Union Oak and Morris Hill, which is the church that sits just feet from the land in question. Over the years, the traffic in our community has tripled. Developments such as Roslin Farms and other communities have sprung up. Highway 301 South is a bypass route to and from these homes. Those of us who live along the highway now find it nearly impossible to get in and out of our driveways between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The traffic is nonstop, and it is congested. Large tractor trailers and semis zoom by in excess speeds of 65 miles per hour. Factor in the daily school buses, the mail and delivery trucks, and it's probably one of the most congested highways in the county. Placing the proposed truck stop, restaurant, rest stop, would only make access to and from our driveways nearly impossible due to the increased traffic. In addition to the traffic, we are concerned about the crime rate increasing. Planting a 24-hour truck stop in the middle of our neighborhood, in the middle of any neighborhood, would obviously draw more people, more transients, and other unwanted riffraff. Factor in the sale of beer and wine, and it's a recipe for disaster. We fear for our safety as residents. We fear for the safety of our young children, including my daughter, who's 15. We are a community that embraces growth, but not at the cost of our neighborhood. In addition to the traffic, what about the pollution? I'm a cancer survivor. My mother is a cancer survivor, and my father died from cancer. We all lived along Highway 301 South. The pollution to our air and our water lines is obviously another factor. I wish I had time to break it down further. We come to you and ask that, I'm sorry, we come to you and ask, if this was your own neighborhood, would you embrace a truck stop being placed smack dab in the middle of your street?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Our fourth speaker in opposition is Mr. Abdul Sayidi. And if you would, please pronounce your last name for us. Thank you.
Good evening.
You could push that up some. There you go.
My name is Abdul Sayidi. I reside at 1968 Colpepper Lane, Fayetteville, 28306. I'm here to, you know, I'm supported with my family and neighbors. And my family owns several properties on Highway 301 South. One is straight across from this property. And we own two more properties. One is a zone for daycare across, I mean, from this. We don't want to have any more business in this area for many reasons, because there's a church close to this property. And we respected our neighborhood. We have, you know, good relationship over many years. And some of them are here, and we even, you know, they even signed many, you know, to oppose, to have any, like, some busy commercial like gas station or something in this road. We would like, you know, to consider furthermore having a daycare, you know, just to serve the community in that area. We believe that, you know, area is not, you know, good for busy or traffic. We don't want to have, like, traffic in that area, increased traffic. And I think the daycare is much, you know, suitable for that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have those seats if you want to see them.
You can hand them to the clerk, please. Thank you.
Thanks. Our last speaker in opposition is Mr. Rudolph Jenkins.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me to be here.
Good evening.
Before I start, the deputy, when you go, you show a person a card down there that you're not supposed to go through the walkthrough. Is he allowed?
Excuse me, sir. Were you talking about this right here, right now? We can deal with that later. You state your name and your address. You don't get the time.
I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We gotta keep, we gotta keep. Okay. Your time's running, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Rudolph W. Jenkins. I'm a retired sergeant major, 30 years of service. And I'm here on the case of 70113. Now, you may have heard about the war in Korea where veterans like myself had to go through 27 degrees below zero to fight for this country. Also called the Vietnam, where I served the 101st Division in the 226th Battalion, which provides water for drinking to the servicemen. I serve in three of the five airborne divisions, 82nd and 11th. And now I hear home on 301 South that I have to go to war again because I'm afraid that my water is not going to be drinkable, and the air is not satisfied for me to breathe. I'm talking like I'm talking now because I have a defibrillator, and I've just got in the hospital, all right?
Okay.
So it makes me wonder, which is the worst of two evils? Can't see or not willing to see? Now, the commissioner says, I don't know your procedure, if you just look at a map, or do you go on reconnaissance or ground reconnaissance? Now, when you do a ground reconnaissance, you see things a little different. And you can't go by hearsay or just looking at that map. I couldn't. That's why I always took a reconnaissance. Now, my reason for being here, that I'm just about at ground zero, where they are about to put or want to be rezoned for business establishment. I'm a business major, and I understand that you ought to make money. But we should also understand that we cannot be bought to do something and end up like Jonah. We may not be in-
That's your time there. That's your time. I appreciate it. But I'll let you finish that last sentence, though. You did say Jonah. I let everybody finish their last sentence, so I'll let you finish the last sentence. You started in the middle of, you said Jonah and then-
Oh. I said, when we don't do the right thing when we are required to, we may not be as successful as Jonah.
Okay.
Ending up in the bell of the week.
Thank you. Okay. I got you. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Madam Clerk?
Are there further speakers?
Okay. Commissioners. Commissioner Council?
Ready with a motion if there's no discussion.
Are there any discussion? Commissioner Council?
I move in the case of P. 1713 to find the request for rezoning inconsistent with the 2030 Growth Vision Plan and any other applicable land use plan, not reasonable or in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff, and as fully reflected in the minutes of the planning board meeting, which are incorporated herein by reference.
Second. Got a motion second. Any questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
I'll take the second motion.
All right. I move to, um, the case of P. 1713. Was he ready to move?
I guess he was ready. Whichever one.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Move to deny the request for a C1P planned local business slash ZZ conditional zoning for convenience retail with gasoline sales, a restaurant, for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff, and as fully reflected in the minutes of the planning board meeting, which are incorporated herein by reference.
A second.
You've heard the motion second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item 3C is case P. 17-15. In your packet this evening, you'll have a, you have a letter from Mr. Neville, the attorney for the developer, who has asked for a deferral to the June 19 meeting. And I don't believe we have any speakers at this time.
Do it. And I think all the commissioners would have got the letter that Mr. Neville was going to be on vacation, asked to defer this. We would need a motion if we would defer this. So I would entertain from-
I have a question.
Yes, uh-huh. Ms. Keith.
This for the attorney. Since this is an advertised public hearing, and no one has showed up, what is going to be the policy on the delay?
There won't be a policy. I mean, he's asked to defer to June 19, and at that time you would conduct the public hearing. We just started new. You won't have, we won't have to re-advertise and give notice. That's already been done.
But one has been advertised for tonight to have a public hearing.
And by announcing it tonight, it's referring it to June 19. You're okay. You won't have to advertise it again.
Okay.
Commissioner Booth?
I have the same question. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your wisdom.
Well, anyway, if I could, if there's no questions, if there, we have to have, actually have action on this. So is the, on the request for a deferral, if I can get a motion?
I move it.
Commissioner Faircloth.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we defer the item, sorry to get there, case P. 17-15, that we defer it to June 19, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved to second.
If we can, can we add the part about the public hearing being re-advertising on that? What it need to be?
You don't have to.
Okay.
Is it, is that an amended motion?
No. If you tell me if that need to, I'll support the motion as to answer.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Faircloth, Keith. Are you voting?
Wait a minute. Let's do this again. All those in favor for the deferral, please raise your hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioners Faircloth, Keith, Evans, Chairman Adams, Commissioners Council in Lancaster, voting in opposition. Commissioner Booth.
Thank you.
Item 3D is a minimum housing code enforcement case. The case number MH 1659-2017. Mr. Walters.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This case is located, property location is 7336 High Pony Trail, which is in the Upchurch Sands subdivision. This is a manufactured home that has been an ongoing problem for about five years. We had an earlier case on this. We allowed the property owner to secure the home, and with the understanding that he would keep it secure and start repairs when he could do it. He failed to do that. We got several complaints from the sheriff's office, so we reopened the case on it. It has been used for illegal activity. It's unsecure. The property owner came to my office after he received our notice and asked for an extended period of time, which I granted him, so he could get together and figure out whether he could do something with the property. He returned at the end of that time period and expressed to me that his interest in the property was, basically, that he didn't have the funds to fix the home, and he was tired of messing with it. So he wanted to let the process take its course. So we're here tonight asking for an order for demolition.
Can we have any questions?
Is the property owner here tonight, Mr. Walters?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Then I'd entertain the motion. Well, I guess I gotta open the public hearing. I'm sorry. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
No speakers.
I will close the public hearing, and I'll call for a motion. Commissioner Keith?
I'll take it. Make a motion to adopt the order and report the minimum housing inspectors and true facts in this case, and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days. To order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action. And to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same at the register of deeds.
Second. It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, since item number four was moved to the public comment period, we'll move to item number five, which is nominations to boards and committees.
Thank you. I've got the ABC Board, two vacancies. I got Mr., Commissioner Booth.
Mr. Chair, this time I'd like to nominate, put the two names for the two vacancies of Lee Bachman and Kenneth Edge.
Commissioner Council?
I wish to nominate Ms. Tammy Sinclair, who is sitting in the back. Would you please wave your hand? Recent graduate.
Of Citizens Academy.
Of the Citizens Academy.
Any other nominations? All right. We will go to appointments to boards and committees. I'd call on Vice Chair, Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to appoint Adam Collier to the Fayetteville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, Steve Harper to the Jury Commission, and manage MADEA to the Tourism Development Authority in their respective positions, sir.
Second.
Any questions? It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you so very much. So I would, that is, before we take a motion to go into closed session, seems to be the end of that agenda. So I will call on Ms. Jenna, if you come forth, and Stephen, if you come forward to the, to the microphone. At the end of the day, you all sat through, come on up, and sat through our meetings, and this gives you an opportunity to further introduce yourself and tell you what, how this meeting went, and how you enjoyed it or didn't enjoy it.
So first with introductions. Hi, I'm Jenna Neighbors. I'm a senior at Massey Hill Classical High School, and I've been a part of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council since its re-establishment in 2014. And I think it's been very crucial to my development as a leader, and I'm going to attend NC State in the fall as a Parks Scholar.
You got that, the Parks Scholar.
Yeah. So I'll be a Parks Scholar in one of the pillars.
Whoa, I will never do it, but go ahead.
Was leadership, and I feel like being a part of the Youth Council definitely helped to develop my leadership, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity.
And how did you enjoy the meeting tonight?
I really enjoyed it. I thought it was very insightful, and I liked to see how actively involved our citizens were in the local government, and I like to see more about the government. I've attended a few city council meetings, but this is my first county commissioners' meeting, and I'm just very glad to be here.
I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but I know which, when you enjoy it best. Thank you, Stephen. And you get out before you get home and do your homework. So you go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stephen Ferran. I have been in youth council for less than a year, and so far, it has granted me so many different opportunities to better improve the community. And being here tonight really opened my eyes to how involved the community is.
And thank you so much for having us.
And if you come around- Stephen, where you go to school?
Pine Forest. That's right.
So you got, you got some pine forest people here, so we allow them to have a little bit. Y'all come around, we'll meet you and-
We have cameras, not focus.
Where's my camera? The city tries to steal my city council people. Y'all just here? That's my NC State person. Parks scholar.